...guarantee the council, we'd be out by 8:01, so we need to get started. So we've only got fifty-four, fifty-seven minutes or so. Okay, let's start with the roll call.
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Mayor Pretemperi Popescu.
Here.
Mayor Riggsby.
Here.
All present.
Okay, join me in standing for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Our heavenly Father, we thank you so much for helping our city to be the great place that it is. We thank you for our balmy weather and our excellent citizens and the institutions that serve the world. Please help us to administer this city so that all of the above can be advantaged by our actions and help us to make this an even better place to live. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be deleted or added?
No, sir.
Now is the time for the public to participate on any items that are not on the agenda. If you've got general comments, now's your chance, three minutes. No takers. Okay, item number one, we have lots of beginnings in this town and this is a kind of a transition point. Bob Frost has served this community as a member of the Budget Committee for, what is that, eighteen years? That's a long time. And I've served on the Budget Committee with him and I can say that he's one of the stalwarts in that committee and he's really helped the city in building its reserves and staying fiscally prudent and squirreling away funds for known future expenditures and we love you for it. We're so thankful for your participation and we have a plaque. Not everybody gets a plaque, but Bob gets one. It has the Loma Linda City symbol in recognition and appreciation for his dedicated service to the City of Loma Linda Budget Committee, March 1995 to March 2013. The podium's available for a speech.
Can I make a comment? It's been a privilege to live here in Loma Linda for the last twenty-five years and to be involved with the city on the Budget Committee and the connected community project and to work with you here on the City Council and a lot of time with Jarv and Conrad and Diana and Pam and others. The city is in good shape in many ways. It has challenges for the future, but it's been a privilege and an honor to be part of this city and to help out on a volunteer basis on some of the committees. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add and thank Mr. Frost for his service. Many of the reasons our city's in very good financial shape is because of the guidance that the Budget Committee has given us and you were a very important member of that for all those years. And we will greatly miss you because your insight was very valuable, given your knowledge of finances. But I know where you live and I have your number, so we always ask you for your opinion. Thanks.
Now we have item number two, public hearing, Council Bill R-2013-17, the annual report and assessment for landscape maintenance district.
That's to be continued to July 23rd, the same thing with-
Well, that's great. Oops, I didn't see that.
The same thing with item three.
Okay, we'll go on, maybe we'll go an extra minute because of that. Okay, item four, public hearing, special planning area D, Phase One Concept, and the Community Development Department will give us an update.
We have Melanie Traxler, a contract planner, to make the presentation for us and then staff and representatives from Lewis Holmes will be here to answer questions and discussion.
Mr. Mayor, before we start, I had a question for the clerk. On the last two items, were those published in the newspaper already?
No, we were unable to meet the publication deadline. That's what necessitated the continuation.
So we don't need to have a public hearing?
No, and we don't need a formal motion to continue because we will republish or do the first publication. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Melanie Traxler and I'm a contract planner for the city, helping to process this project. And I think the best way to give a presentation to you is through this PowerPoint, so if you could direct your attention to the screen. We refer to this project collectively as the Phase One Concept for Special Planning Area D. It involves a number of entitlements that are listed here and I'll be going through those, but we have a general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, zone map change, tentative parcel map, and precise plan of design. A project application was submitted back in December 2012 and as part of this process there was a request to process, or as part of the application, a request to process a general plan amendment and parcel map, all related to entitlements that are necessary to allow for a future application that will be processed to handle a healthcare facility and medical clinic facility and general commercial retail center in the project area. A little background briefly, this project site is located within Special Planning Area D, which is a planning area designated for mixed use and comprehensive planning within the overall general plan area in the northeastern portion of the city. As one of the requirements for Special Planning Area D, it does envision the concept that this area be master planned. This area is also contiguous with an area that was previously planned through two specific plans. That would be the University Village specific plan and the Orchard Park specific plan, which were rescinded and following that, that is when the special planning area designation through the general plan updates process was assigned to that. This roughly represents the project area that we are talking about. Again, it's south of Redlands Boulevard, westerly of California. Give my little, and this is Enterprise Drive over here and Brenmar Avenue, just to give perspective. This is the apartment, there's an apartment complex off here to the left and the Edison easement runs north-south, just adjacent to the edge of that. For context, here's the general plan land use map and this is the area of Special Planning Area D. There's other special planning areas throughout the city that each have their own unique vision and direction, but again, we'll be focusing on this for this evening. And just up close, the property that we're actually talking about is a little over eighty acres, it's about eighty-two acres. The overall boundary that is affected by the tentative parcel map, parcel reconfiguration is outlined here. It consists of thirteen existing parcels within there. I'm going to lay out some terminology just to help with the discussion tonight. This is those thirteen parcels that we were just looking at. You'll recognize the shape here. The northerly portion of this is representative, actually the square going down here, of what we will be referring to as the Phase One Concept area. The overall boundary shown by the dash line represents the tentative map area. And this area roughly highlighted in this mid-rectangle here is the area of zone change. There is going to, the project involves reconfiguration of the parcels in here and as a result of that, we'll be looking at adjusting some zoning just within this area to accommodate So again, the project actions, we have a general plan amendment, a specific plan amendment to the East Valley Corridor specific plan, a zone map change, tentative parcel map, precise plan of design, and mitigated negative declaration to satisfy the CEQA documentation for supporting these entitlement approvals. I'm going to go through each requested entitlement and explain specifically what's being requested. So for the general plan amendment, we're essentially looking at changes to the text of the general plan that would allow for phasing within the specific plan, within the Special Planning Area D. So the purpose of the general plan amendment is to establish phasing that will allow for reasonable and orderly growth consistent with the policies that are already presented within the general plan. Also then, to establish specifically a Phase One Concept area that is comprised of forty-two, approximately forty-two net acres. You'll see a couple of numbers listed out, forty-two acres or forty-six acres, and it's not really an inconsistency, it's just the difference of whether we're talking about gross acreage or net acreage. So I've clarified that here. The general plan text amendment also allows for certain minor corrections and clarifications to Table 2B, and I'll go into those in a moment. What the text changes would do is, again, they would set up a mechanism for allowing phasing within the overall Special Planning Area D. And as part of that phasing implementation process, it requires that when a phase is requested, that, one, that it be a minimum of forty acres in size, and this is roughly representative of that area, again, this is about forty-six acres here, that it also meet a criteria that the underlying zoning for that require that a planned development permit or some equivalent permit be required to deal with the comprehensive planning within a phased area. And then it also sets up in this particular case that the Phase One Concept would be located approximately in this location. The text changes also make some modifications to Table 2B, which is a critical component of the Special Planning Area D text within the plan. And through this process, I want to point out that, aside from these two numbers that I'll come back to, there is no change to the bottom line numbers within Table 2B. We're still looking at an overall planning area of just under three hundred acres. The primary land use assignments and relative acreages between the land uses does not change. We are proposing a correction. I mentioned that there are minor corrections. When we were reviewing this table, we noted that it appeared that the acreage numbers that were incorporated for roadway and trail systems had been reversed early on, and so we're making that correction here to get the appropriate acreages lined up. What this table then does is it establishes a baseline for what's existing out there in terms of uses. For example, we have the Mission School at the corner of Redlands Boulevard and California Avenue, and so we're recognizing that as an existing acreage for institutional use. Associated with that is a playground area that is recognized, or at least categorized for purpose of Table 2B, as park, and that is representing the 4.95 acres here that happens to be pulled out separate and different from the remainder parks and open space. We also recognize here the Heritage Park that's now in place, so that with the area that would be reserved for the oak tree preservation represents 9.60 acres. Demonstrating here then, and assigning assumed acreages for the Phase One Concept that would be implemented, which would include 8.28 acres of institutional and the remainder acreage area as Phase One, 27.64 acres. There is a road that will be proposed, but until the final plan is designed or final map is processed, to have the acreage in there and the trail and the park acreage will be predetermined. We're assuming at this point, based on our knowledge of what the future application could include, that we would assume that Phase One would also include approximately six and a half acres of park and open space within that Phase One planning area. The project site, in particular the Phase One portion, or about half of the track map area, lies within the East Valley Corridor specific plan area, which as you know, runs all along Redlands Boulevard. And because of some of the reconfiguration of the lots, we need to adjust the boundary line for that corridor plan so that it aligns with the parcels, the new parcels that are being created. So we're requesting an amendment of the southerly boundary to move that boundary approximately sixty-nine feet south for a portion of one of those parcels, and that'll be more evident in this exhibit here. Again, this would be Redland Boulevard up here, this area shown in the light blue and bounded by this darker line here, is the existing line for the East Valley Corridor specific plan boundary. When this property is reconfigured through the parcel map, we would be looking at a proposed change to the boundary line roughly to correspond here, bring it straight across. Actually, the purpose is that right now, this area consists of thirteen parcels and through the tentative map, which I'm about to move on to next, this area will be reconfigured into only four parcels. So as part of that reconfiguration, this kind of odd parcel will be shifted up, and so now we're going to have a line that, right now, this boundary line corresponds with the existing parcel lines. And so what we want to do is, once it's reconfigured, have the boundary line correspond with the new parcel lines. And you'll be able to see that in a couple of the next slides up. So again, part of the request is for a tentative parcel map, and this is primarily to establish and consolidate parcels, to establish new parcels for sale, lease, and implementation. They'd be consolidating thirteen existing lots into four parcels, three full parcels and a remainder parcel, as well as establishing two lots, and the two lots will be used solely for roadway improvements. This will also involve a reconfiguration of some of the lot lines, and we refer to this as tentative parcel map 19018.
Is that just reversed or is that the-
Is it reversed?
TMP?
Oh, you're absolutely correct. We've been looking at that for a couple of weeks and we did not catch it.
It was for-
Well-
It's the tentative of map parcel.
Tendative map parcels, yes. And this would be that TMP. This would be the, this is the requested configuration. So you can see it's much more simplified instead of the thirteen lots. We have the larger parcel one, that is about thirty-six acres, I believe. Parcel two, about five and a half, between five and a half and six acres over here. Our parcel three. And then this would be our remainder parcel, parcel four. This is referred to as Lot A, and this would be the lot that is set aside for the southerly extension of Brenmar. Brenmar extends to the north from here, so it would come directly down and come in. Part of the reason for the jog in the road here is to create a parcel size here of adequate configuration and size to accommodate potentially a larger medical facility or healthcare facility use, and that creates an adequate parcel here with good access for possibly a potential general commercial use. This is just to help you understand the consolidation. These lines represent the existing thirteen parcels, and you may recall on an earlier exhibit, I had that rectangular shown in this area. So what you see here is the proposed parcel line, and here's the existing, so you can see how it's just shifting the line a little bit. And because of that, the zoning, which is assigned, for example, to this parcel, had been assigned to this portion, now has to be rezoned to match what would be part of this larger parcel, and that'll be evident in another future slide here too. Just to give you for reference. Which then brings me to the zone map change. So we are looking to make a couple adjustments. One is to change the zoning for the East Valley Corridor Special District Zone to R1 for a sliver of land and simply to change the existing R1 and planned community zones to the East Valley Corridor Special District. And overall, the net change, because as a result of this and the way that the parcels line up, is a reduction of the East Valley Corridor area by about 1.15 acres and an increase of the planned community by one acre and R1 by 2.15 acres. Demonstrate what that's going to look like here. So as you can see here, the, right now, the zoning matches with the parcel lines, and because the parcel lines are going to be changed, we're just simply making an adjustment by lowering, by bringing our specific plan boundary straight across instead of having that jog in it, dropping the line down a little bit from this lighter colored line there, and then making up the difference so that all the parcels are consistently zoned and there's no zoning split across lot lines. So we refer to it pretty much as a cleanup effort. As I mentioned, there is a little bit of shift in acreage, but overall, in the grand scheme, it's an insignificant change in total acreage adjustments. And related to this whole entitlement request as well is a precise plan of design, and this precise plan of design represents the only physical development that would actually be approved as part of your consideration for tonight. The Phase One, the zone map is simply laying the framework for some future proposal to come in and be able to develop as a Phase One Concept project. And we do not have any current application for that or any specifics on design or intensity of use. Those uses would be consistent, would have to be required to be consistent still with the vision that's already set forth in Special Planning Area D and outlined in Table 2B. So the precise plan of design proposes the extension of Brenmar Avenue approximately sixteen-hundred-and-fifty feet south of Redlands Boulevard. It would be approximately one-hundred-and-eighteen feet wide right-of-way, and that right-of-way itself would include the sidewalks, parkways, travel lanes, roadway median through a portion of it, curbs and a trail. Infrastructure extensions would be included with the street. They'd be put in place at the same time the street is constructed, and there's also a landscape concept plan going along with that. And I'll show you those. So this is the improvement plan. Again, we're simply looking at potential improvements along Lot A for the extension of Brenmar south to this point, where we've got a turnaround hammerhead here for emergency access vehicles. We're looking at full roadway width implementation through here and then half roadway width, assuming that at some future point, whenever this parcel gets developed, the remainder of the road would come through. This is adequate for now because there is no through use being proposed at this point of time. And we do also, this improvement plan also includes just some improvements along the frontage here, including landscaping to extend that right-of-way, allow for turning lanes as appropriate. And I'll just point out, since we're on this page, and I think you have copies of the plans as well, but this is a cross-section of what the road right-of-way would look like. We've got the travel lanes, the median area in the center, sidewalk off to the west side, and sidewalk, trail, and parkway here off to the right or east side. This is a conceptual landscape plan. The final landscape plan will come through planning for approval, but again, we're generally looking at some landscape treatment along the entire length of the roadway improvement here. We're looking at incorporating medians, at least through the entry here, since they're, for safety reasons, we don't want any turning movements happening within this portion anyway. We left out the roadway medians here. They're not being proposed at this time because it's not known how either of these parcels is going to be accessed, and we wanted to leave flexibility for that. Again, this little inset here just helps you, helps illustrate how the roadway right-of-way is going to be developed. We've got our sidewalk along this edge here, and you can see this is the trail system off here. So the trail would parallel the road and connect from Redlands to whatever interior use could be developed in the future. And final action requested is the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration. This represents the CEQA review for Phase One, including its related entitlements for parcel map and the physical development of the Brenmar extension, Avenue extension. Through the mitigated negative declaration, all impacts were determined to be less than significant with recommended mitigation measure incorporated. And I'd like to point out that the mitigation measures that were incorporated were mitigation measures that were carried over specifically from the general plan EIR and also from the University Village EIR, which were certified documents or documents that we used as reference to demonstrate that impacts are reduced to less than significant. At the time of those projects, at those documents' review and consideration, it was accepted that those mitigations would be less than significant, so that supports this. The document was processed for a twenty-day public review period from May 3rd through May 22nd. We received one written comment on that from the Mission Band Vindians, and there were some, and I believe you have a copy of that comment letter in your packet. Some questions were raised about the technical study that was relied upon as well as the process, and we responded to Mr. Daniel McCarthy on that, and I believe that we've addressed his issues. He was comfortable with the response that we provided to him, and he had no additional concerns moving forward. We also received a couple other public inquiries, and primarily, they were questions about the project, wanting a little clarification, and then a number of citizens that live on Mission Road were expressed concern about traffic, potential traffic on Mission Road, and concern about having a through road come from Redlands Boulevard onto Mission and what that might mean. So it was explained that there is no connection of the Brenmar Avenue through to Mission Road being proposed at this time, and because there is no physical development being proposed at this time, with the exception of that road extension, no traffic would be generated beyond construction, traffic for the short term. That's the, those are the entitlements that are being requested. When we presented this information to the Planning Commission and they were considering the project, there were some questions and issues that they raised, primarily concern about the need for the incorporation of future parks and how we would ensure through the phasing process that park and recreation and- that park and recreation and trail areas would be provided. And we did point out that as part of the General Plan text amendment, now I forget what number it is. I think it's Policy Q that has been added. Confirm that. Well, you'll see it, it's underlined and highlighted in your, in the audience. I believe that it's Q, is added to ensure that as phased development would go in, that each would be responsible for incorporating its fair share of park acreage, recreation, trail area, open space, infrastructure. And because as part of the requirements that are set up, each phase going in has to process some type of planned development permit or equivalent, that allows an opportunity for establishing flexibility within the overall planned development permit process to ensure that those elements are incorporated. And it allows an opportunity through the design review process to tie some conditions to that. It also provides for some flexibility to determine whether those elements should be incorporated 100% within the phase, the current phase area for consideration, or whether some of those could be done in lieu for offsite, but within Special Planning Area D. That allows flexibility for consolidating larger areas for perhaps for larger park area. And I'll get into addressing that. The other concern that the Planning Commission had was just wanting to make sure that through this phasing concept process, that we still have the opportunity to do a comprehensive planning process for the whole special planning area, and to make sure that it's not coming across as piecemealed. And we spent some time and some discussion on that, and I thought it would be helpful in terms of the rest of the presentation here to walk you through the discussion we had with them. They were not, we didn't have this visually prepared for them before, but I think this, you'll find this helpful. We've put this, added this to the presentation for tonight. So the question is, what general plan guidance is already provided for Special Planning Area D? And what we're proposing with the General Plan Amendment is that you accept the fact that the Special Planning Area D already has enough guidance and information in it to function as the framework for the master plan. If you, if, as a project goes in, it has to be consistent with the general plan, and if the general plan is already laying the framework for what that master plan concept needs to look like, then in essence, it already provides the master planning level of framework that's necessary to allow for, to provide the guidance for phasing to occur. So just to lay the context here, again, here is our Special Planning Area D in its entirety, with the overlay there demonstrating where Phase 1 is proposed. Reviewing the text of the, of the General Plan, specifically, for Special Planning Area D, it lays out the vision for that area in a couple subsections. One, it has kind of an introductory visionary statement, and then it establishes guiding policies and implementing policies. And then through the text amendment, we're also proposing a new section on phasing, planned phasing policies. But within the existing guiding policy, which is, outlines the overall vision, it specifically, and this is text taken directly from there word for word, "It intends that this, within the planning area, be characterized by horizontal and vertical mixed uses developed along the frontages of Redlands Boulevard and California Street." So what this starts to look like is we have kind of a guideline for where we would expect to see commercial and mixed uses incorporated. Within that same guiding policy section, it specifically indicates that specific, single families residential uses should be placed towards the central, western, and southern portions of the planning area. And so that starts to look like this. Central, western, southern portions. It also says that multifamily development is permitted toward the interior. Well, this could be just about anywhere, but we picked this. The guiding policy also makes mention of the existing school at the corner of Redlands Boulevard and California Street. It allows for that area to remain as an existing school, and should it ever not become a school anymore, it encourages that that building be reused for some type of commercial, or mixed use, or some type of reuse, use that can be reused, that historic structure there. It also talks about establishment of a heritage park, which has already taken place. And it very specifically talks about a large sports-oriented community park somewhere within here, within the planning area. On these first two items, we have the school site, the heritage park, and within the school site, we've, as we were referring to Table 2B before, we have this park area here. Just looking at the table. We've got our institutional existing for the school site. We've got the park playground area associated with the school site, and then our heritage park area. It's existing components already played out within Table 2B. Going back to the concept of the large sports-oriented community park, jumping to the implementing policies, which are number-lettered within the, within the General Plan, specifically implementing policy H states that public open space in proximity to residential uses, it's desired. It also talks about, "Within planned open space and park areas, provide active sports facilities." So we've, given the vision, see that it's being somewhat centrally located, so that it allows access to all the residential uses. So this is one possible location for that facility. This square here represents, this is not to scale, but this is approximately the size of a chunk of a 30-acre parcel of land. Implementing policies, policy E also talks about ensuring that we align north-south collector roads within, with existing streets located north of Redlands Boulevard. So what we have here is a couple possibles, opportunities. This is Brenmar extending north here. Did you say Rhonda? Rhonda? And I'm not real sure of the name of this one, but it's doubtful this one would connect through because of the school being located there.
Taft?
Okay, thank you. And so that's where, you know, potential connectors off of Redlands Boulevard could occur, and we're not sure what the configuration in site would look like, but you know, there's one possible configuration, just with internal connectivity, a grid system, at least with some connection over to California, and eventually some connection at some location down to Mission. But there's a lot of opportunities there, depending on how future phasing and proposals come in. And then jumping back to the guiding policy, just another layer to add to this, it's very important. The overall vision for this area really focuses on the concept of livable, walkable community. And when you consider all the implementing policies together, there's a huge emphasis on providing amenities, including parks, trails, and passeos, and other recreational uses. And that has to be integrated in here. And that was the primary concern of the Planning Commission, to make sure that those were adequately addressed and planned for, and not just stuck in some remainder area down the road, that it was integrated as part of the planning process. So we envisioned, you know, how might that look in this concept? And so we're back to our tablet here. And so one important aspect is the Edison Corridor, and connectivity to this. So this puts that in context there. And we'd be looking at some type of interconnecting trail system throughout. Could be any configuration, but we would imagine that, you know, there's an opportunity to interconnect all the various uses. But again, it all kind of focuses down what's going to be central here, and potentially bringing it also up to Redlands Boulevard, and maybe in a couple locations. Overall, Table B calls for approximately between 50 and 60 acres of park and recreation open space area, as well as trails. So the sports park in and of itself might not be enough, and we would envision the opportunity to incorporate several other, those are kind of light, they didn't come up, but we've got a couple other neighborhood parks perhaps throughout the area. And then finally, going back to the implementing policies, policy O, we've proposed an amendment to this that just simply takes out the word that a master plan be prepared, and simply says that it be developed through a coordinated process. Because again, the text amendment would accept these guiding policies already to function as the master plan that would otherwise have been required. And also, so through a coordinated process, and also planned and implemented in a comprehensive, rather than a piecemeal manner. And because of those policies that are in place, and through some of the examples that we've shown, it does demonstrate that there's a lot of structure already provided within the plan. And so we have our plan, and we have a Phase 1 that at this point would fit in approximately within this area. So there's still a lot of flexibility within the area outside that. We see that this area is dominated primarily as some commercial mixed use. We want to capture some roadway extension here, because that's a critical one, especially since this one may not be viable. And we're looking at some trail connectivity occurring somewhere within this area. It seems that with, through the improvement plan, we've at least captured this access of some sort connecting into the site and the trail system. No trails in this, and again, playing up on the commercial mixed use opportunity along the corridor. That concludes my long and lengthy presentation. Thank you for your patience. I'm happy to answer any questions. And also, the project applicant, Louis Investment, is here if you have any questions from them.
You clicked first. Go ahead. Just some questions, clarification. You refer to us as Phase 1, and you, the part outlined is about 40 acres, but yet you showed us areas that actually goes all the way down to Mission. Is that not considered part of Phase 1?
No. The area that goes down to Mission is simply the parcel map area. So the parcel map area is an 80, approximately an 82-acre area, and the Phase 1 area is approximately roughly 45-acre area.
And I know that it doesn't specify in the staff report, it just makes a general reference to medical clinic, but are we not doing this with the intention of actually putting a VA facility over there?
That is who we believe is going to come in with an application. And from a land use perspective, we've classified that as a medical clinic healthcare facility. And just for point of discussion, that particular use definition is somewhat unique in that it's, it is a variety of uses involved in there. You've got, you know, institutional type uses, office uses, administrative. So we consider it in the context of a mixed use that's consistent with the resident, retail mixed use intent for that area.
For this General Plan Amendment, I notice you're doing a negative mitigated declaration, and you refer to it from the EIR that was done back in 2005. Is that adequate enough to meet state guidelines to refer to an EIR that was done that long ago?
Yes, I believe it is. Do you want me to address this, or would you like to address it?
Before we get into that, the only impacts or actions that you're approving tonight is for us to build a road.
Okay.
So no structure, no other activity, a road in the middle of a field. Anything else will come back for additional entitlements and additional environmental reviews with additional mitigation measures tied to those impacts.
And that was my follow-up question. So if an actual project does get submitted, there will be an EIR to be completed at that time? Is that my understanding?
There'll be some, some sequoia documentation. We don't know what form that is until we see the actual project and have an opportunity to make a determination.
Okay. Now, I noticed that since we're only dealing with the road, is my understanding from what I understand about the VA is that they're requiring to have two access points. Putting in just that road, does that satisfy their two access points?
I do not know. We have not seen an application.
Conceivably, they would have a main entrance on the new road, and probably some secondary access point off Redlands Boulevard, probably on the westerly side of the property, just as a delivery road or a secondary entrance.
And you could add that at the time?
That would be part of the entitlement for the specific building in site.
And I know that we're identifying the specific amount of acreage related to future medical clinic, but what were to happen if that future medical clinic doesn't come to
By approving the Phase 1 concept, you are basically opening up this area, conceptually approving this area for development, for any type of use that would be consistent with what we already identified in Table 2B. It was approximately that eight acres of institutional use, the 26 acres of the retail mixed, and six and a half of park. So any combination of that, the question then comes into, you know, what other uses could be retail mixed use, and there is a variety of uses that could fall in that.
Future uses outside of whatever would happen there would be determined by the Planning Commission and by this body. So if that does not come to fruition, and some other project comes through, then you would have to find that that's consistent with the General Plan and the land use as it sits, as you have created it now.
I guess the point of clarification, I know in the past, when the first project was proposed, it, you know, it stated, "We're planning on putting in X amount of acreage of schools," with a caveat that if it's not financially feasible, if it doesn't happen, those acreage can be converted to some other use. Is there no such language in this proposal that would have that type of a condition?
No, because we're, the use that's being proposed is what's already allowed in Table 2B. So there's no adjustment of use.
Okay. And I know you've shown us a table of units associated with the various acreage. You're not associating any units at all with this proposal?
Units as in residential units?
Yes.
No residential units?
And that's correct.
As far as I know, there's no residential being, that we expect to come in. Technically, Table 2B does assign up to 400 units within, within the, if you recall, earlier on, that area of red that I had shown on the outline?
Correct.
So the way Table 2B is written, anything that is in red here could incorporate amongst all of this, up to 400 units of multifamily. So there's no certainty as to where that would go. You know, somebody could come in as a mixed use project and put it along here, or along here. It's our understanding that whatever, that the uses that we're establishing this framework for, that there's no residential that we're expecting from that application when it comes in. And again, as Conrad pointed out, that, you know, that discretion still comes back to the city through the planned development review process to consider the uses in the site plan at that point of time.
Okay. I think that's the questions I have for now. Thank you.
I have a follow-up question on that.
I have a follow-up question on that. When we're consuming some of the mixed-use land, but not using up any of the residential units attached to mixed use, just for, as an academic exercise, let's say we consume 99% of the land to build this project that was previously assigned to mixed use, and we're calling it mixed use because of your logical argument, would that place 400 units on the remaining 1% of the land? Or does the use of the land decrement the 400 units in the table?
The question of whether residential gets built at all within Special Planning Area D and whether the 400 units go in here, there is, through the implementing policies that we refer to, there is a particular policy in there that says up to a certain number of residential units can be built. So in interpreting that, at least staff interpretation, but ultimately it's your interpretation, is that the number of residential units is not a certainty, it just cannot exceed that. So it's possible that Special Planning Area D, as it builds out, if there is not a market for higher density in here, it could strictly be single-family development, you might end up with only 900 units overall at build-out, unless, again, through the planning, the site plan review process, that, you know, there's a direction to make sure that we achieve the higher end.
I'm not sure how to get on the same page with you because I've got similar-looking pictures from your slides, but I'm looking, I have a couple of questions regarding the slide you showed on existing zoning versus the proposed zoning. And I had two or three questions, if you can find those. They were--
They're just way back here a little bit.
Exhibit four is the existing zone, and then I've got exhibit eight and Attachment D in my handout.
There we go.
There's proposed now. All right, there's existing. Now, I realize these are not to scale, but my question is, with, when you did the rezoning, and if you can go to the proposed zoning now, did it change the acreage totals for the R1 zone and the PC zones?
Yes. It did.
By how much? Oh, there we go.
Total net change, reduction, it reduced the special, the East Valley Corridor Special District or Special Development District, reduced it by 1.15 acres.
Okay.
And it increased the acreage of Planned Community, Planned Community by one acre. And then it increased the total R1 by that.
Okay.
So it seems a little odd when you see that. I mean, overall, we lost a larger portion and then it balanced back out, but this is the net total.
And when we're talking Planned Community, are we talking parks and that kind of stuff? What, help me, single-family homes, I understand, the other I understand, but Planned Community, what are we talking about?
Well, Planned Community is an existing zoning designation within our code that basically its functions kind of is the equivalent of a planned development permitting process. It's intended to allow a mixed use and actually, am I correct in saying that it requires kind of like a planned development review process anyway? It allows for flexibility. If I recall, this development that's just south of here along Mission Road is an example of Planned Community development, where you have integrated parks and amenities throughout. It allows for flexibility within the actual design, so you can have some adjustments on, from the standard setbacks and requirements to allow for greater flexibility to achieve and incorporate some of the amenities you desire.
And so the reason that's Planned Community zoning now is because that's the way you found it?
Exactly. That's how we found it.
There's no bearing on what you plan to do.
From a practical aspect, any zoning outside of that East Valley Corridor, SD zoning, is really a placeholder, because anything that will happen in the future will require--
Rezoning.
Rezoning and will require the plan, the general plan, and the configuration to the phasing requirements, which will require essentially a Planned Community or Planned Areas One piece.
And with the rezoning that we're talking about here, now, you showed us a, you know, prospective way this could all come out with Area D. Is that realistic? In other words, this EVCZ, EVC, Special District zoning, doesn't change the overall general plan that we've heard tonight?
It does not. What we tried to show you on the second part was how detailed the general plan is--
Right, right.
--in where it calls out what is supposed to happen there. So conceivably, if somebody tried to put commercial down the west side, it would be inconsistent with the general plan.
Yeah.
That wouldn't happen.
Okay. If you can go to the proposed zoning again, now, Phase Two is the upper right-hand, the eastern, the northeast corner, correct? On the other side of the road?
There's only--
No, no, no. What's that?
Oh, oh, parcel two.
Yeah, parcel two. I'm sorry, parcel two.
Yeah, parcel.
My apology.
So this--
And that's planned for commercial use. So if the VA decides to put a plan in and bid on this, then parcel two would be designed for commercial use?
That's correct. It would have to be some type of retail mixed use within there. Because of the limited lot size and the irregularity, that really the best opportunity to use this site then is for commercial retail and--
And that would be consistent with the general plan that calls for livable, walkable, that you're putting commercial across the street from a heavy, high-density employer to reduce traffic trips and so that people can walk to and from lunches and shopping and those type of things.
So what I, I'm not sure to what extent your operation would have an interest in what shops go in there. I'll tell you, this council will have a keen interest, because we've taken some serious heat recently on McDonald's and fast-food restaurants, so just a heads up. Good presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It looks like an exciting possibility.
I think we addressed the issue about housing, but in relationship to open space and park space, this particular general plan amendment does not limit the amount of park space nor its location at this point, correct?
That is correct.
That's correct. There's no change to Table 2B. It's exactly as how it was originally established.
So in other words--
And each phase would be required to carry its own park space or provide aggregated park space somewhere within Area D off-site.
But in this phase, we just consider it Phase One, other than designating, which looks like 5.5 acres?
6.53 is a minimum for park space.
Minimum, but it may end up being much higher than that proportionally as you relate it to the whole amount.
Yeah, and they would be required to do trails, the actual acreage has yet to be determined, and this number could be adjusted. But part of the reason is that until we get an actual site plan to look at, it's hard for us to determine what their fair share is and how it could best be located to accommodate the broader picture for Special Planning Area D.
Okay. If there are no further questions, then I think it's time for the public hearing. Do you have one more?
I just have one other question. Conrad, if you could tell us exactly, based on the zoning and so forth, what is it we're approving tonight? Of all that we've heard?
You are approving, taking 13 lots, turning them into four parcels and space for a roadway, cleaning up the zoning that is caused, zoning conflicts caused by that, approving a road into that field, and approving a general plan amendment that allows for phasing that's consistent with the general plan and following a overarching Planned Community and approval process.
So we're not doing the rezoning?
Yes, you are doing rezoning. The rezoning is just a cleanup, so as the parcel lines move, the rezoning will move with those parcel lines.
And just to play the devil's advocate, what's the consequences if this does not get approved?
Then it would be highly improbable that the VA would be able to, actually would be impossible for the VA to site there and would probably be impossible for them to locate in the city of Long Island.
Is there a timeline associated to this approval?
The VA is on, is ready to announce, and we're expecting to hear from them the beginning of July on who their developer is. The landowner is required to have the property correctly zoned and configured at coincident with the announcement or real close to it. So we're right--
Right there.
We're dovetailing our timelines.
Thank you.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. I do have one request to speak from Larry Leas or Lees.
Yes, sir.
Can you come forward to the podium? Has a comment on rezoning.
Thank you very much. My name is Larry Lees. I live at 25886 Mission Road, and it's on the north side of the street. We've lived there since the early eighties, my wife and I, and have experienced the heavy increases of vehicular travel, traffic, in the time we've moved in, since the time we moved in. I've got the notice of public hearing that I received in the mail the other day, and I wanted to go over, I'd like to quote from that, and then I've got a couple of questions I'd like to take on that. Basically, if you've got your general plan here, it says, "A request for approval of a general plan amendment to establish Phase One implementation policy and guidelines for a 46.42 future development plan within Special Planning Area D." Now, it's an amendment to, which means it's from, to something else. And that's what I, was a little bit confused on what you were saying here, although I appreciated your overall presentation. It says, "To amend or from the East Valley Corridor, EVC, specific plan boundary, and approve a change of zone from EVC District and Single Resident RI to EVC District, Single Planning, Single Family Residence, and Planned Community." So from just reading this here, I see that you're moving, the net result is, you didn't have a Planned Community in the first part. Is that correct, ma'am?
That's incorrect. There was a Planned Community zone in the beginning, and there will continue to be a Planned Community--
Okay, that's not what this says.
Excuse me. Can you hold the keyboard?
And I can go ahead here then, while she's looking into that. To a single-family resident and Planned Community. So I take from that, that there was no Planned Community in the original plan. And so with no community, with no Planned Community, why are we throwing it in the first? Now, it's something that's going to be happening down the road anyway. It just seems to complicate the matter by putting into a proposed zone, the item that was not there in the first one, according to this. Now, that's all I've got to look at when I came in tonight, basically, was this. So I don't understand, that's not the main question, though. "A request to approve a precise plan of design to allow construction of the southern extension of Bryn Mawr Avenue, south of Redlands Boulevard. All these requests collectively relate to establishing the future for Phase One developmental plan, conceptually identified for retail and institutional uses that are consistent with the general plan located within Special Planning Area D, generally bounded, generally south of Redlands Boulevard," you see that, "north of Mission Road, and between Enterprise Drive and Bryn Mawr." Now, my experience from the early eighties was that we have experienced heavy traffic. Number one, we've had the build-outs of those two Planned Communities, as you so accurately described them as, but we also have the people that are coming from north wanting to get to the freeway, not wanting to be jammed up when they get down to the situation that's now at California and Redlands Boulevard. So what they do is they hang a left on Mission Road, you got it. They're all going to the freeway, but that entanglement down there, they figure they can get by quicker to the freeway if they come down Mission Road. Now, we've had traffic going down there at horrendous speeds. Let me also point out that right now, going east from California Street to Mountain View, there is one, one 35 mile per hour speed limit. That's all. Now, I have heard that, I've heard that we're, that, well, there was a, I contacted a Sergeant Atkinson, and he set up, I believe, a unit that would actually look at that. He felt, and I can see where he's coming from, that a lot of it related to the fact that it was, it was probably related to morning traffic. But I can tell you that that traffic is there all the day, every day, and they're just speeding down that, that kind of thing. I live on Mission. I live on the north side of Mission Street. That means when I back out, I've got a, I've got a personal racetrack driver that I've got to be concerned about. I have also heard that what happened was that he was able to juggle some fronts and actually put some patrol down there. I have heard that there was like between 20 and 30 arrests made. Where would those arrests come on? Out of the two Planned Communities that were down there. Because they come out to the south, I mean, to the west of that one traffic sign.
Yeah. Do you have a comment about the speed limit signs?
Yes, sir. If you go back out tonight, we, the city already installed the additional speed limit sign along Mission Road, and also installed a sign that said patrol by radars, and we have, we did have extra patrol down--
Yes, sir, you did. But it was only on one side of the street. When it comes in off of Mountain View, right there at the end, we just installed more. Huh?
We just installed today. We did install more sign today.
So your comments about this, we took them seriously and we put in extra signs?
Well, the problem is, that's a sign for the people going east. Now, there's no sign yet on, is there any more signs?
Yes, sir.
Where?
If you go out there, we just installed today. Since you commented--
Where is it at?
Check it out. What I can tell you is the city council, and the city council is in favor of improving traffic flow throughout the city, including enforcing reasonable speed limits. If there aren't enough speed limit signs, we'll put more.
Yeah. There seems to me that there ought to be at least one on the going east after you get, I mean, west, after you get beyond that--
There may already be that. Check it out, see if it's enough, and let us know.
Who do I, who do I report that to? You? I'll do that. Okay, thank you so very much for that. But now my two questions that I have is that, one of them has been settled by reading the agenda, say, there's, you're not going to make a decision tonight. This is merely first reading kind of thing. Will there be future public hearings? And now I can answer that and say yes on that. Do Bill-- Will there be future public hearings, and now I can answer that and say yes on that, to discuss the build-outs for the single-residence R1s and the planned communities PC2s? I believe that would be true, right?
Yeah, we don't even anticipate that any projects are forthcoming anytime soon on that at all.
The last.
The projects we're anticipating are in that EVCSD district.
Yes, yes, I understand that. But I'm looking ahead, that we aren't going to get to a place where we do not have an opportunity to have public, and I think you've satisfied for that. Now, the idea, and I appreciate the fact that there's going to be maybe more entrances off Redlands Boulevard in the future, kind of thing, as things get built out, it would seem to me that that is the right way to handle all of the, of the future build-out. I say no reason, at this point in time, to have any traffic from that area enter onto Mission Road. She showed him a map there. Can you bring up that map that shows the, it's going to?
At this point, there is no plan to bring a road down to Mission. None of this discussed tonight has anything to do with a road extending to Mission.
For the present.
There's no road going to Mission Road.
In the future, we, see, we can't really comment on it now, because there's no project before us.
I'm just looking.
We don't know if there will be a road to Mission Road later, but we take your comment into context, and we'll.
Yeah, because the less traffic that comes onto Redlands Boulevard, the easier it is for us. Now, we, we have, from the standpoint of demographics, we have young people, married people with children. They get on the bus there at, on Redlands Boulevard, they catch the bus. We have older people that are still in the workforce, and they still have to get out and go to work. And then, we also have those of us who are in our seventies, our eighties, and some that are in our nineties down there. Those are my neighbors. And so, what I'm really looking for is to try to get across to all of you that we want as, we don't want any more traffic on Redlands Boulevard, I mean, Mission Road than is absolutely necessary. But it looks like we're going to be faced with a lot of traffic coming down from the subdivisions and those coming.
Sir, there's, right here.
Oh, okay.
You've got, your concern is a very valid concern, and a lot of that has already been addressed. There are increased traffic patrols down there going on, there are people being cited. But I believe the stuff that's being discussed tonight, just the stuff tonight, not stuff in the future, should have little to no effect on any traffic on Mission. There is nothing connecting it to Mission. It's all stuff that's going to be on the northern part of Area D off of Redlands Boulevard.
Right, that's the place to have it.
Yeah, just so you understand, so all this stuff that we're discussing now is completely separate from the issue of the speeders and the traffic problem on Mission Road, which has, we believe, already been addressed. Isn't that correct, Councilman Peskow?
Of course.
That there's more enforcement that's been going on on Mission Road?
Mine wasn't this being issue.
Okay.
What is the response here?
We're just very concerned about that going on down there, so.
Thank you, and I'll be getting back with you.
Thank you for your concerns about this. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to comment? Looks like there's one.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I just wanted to take a quick, quick moment to introduce myself. My name's Aaron O'Leary. I represent the applicant, and I just wanted to take a time to say thank you for your attention tonight. Wanted to thank Jarb, Conrad, Guillermo, and Melanie for all their hard work on this project to date, so, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council? And what kind of grouping can we do on these motions, or is it all, can we do a big lump?
You may take them as one action by referencing the items listed in the agenda and moving the staff recommendation in toto.
Okay.
Okay, I'll give it a shot. I'll make a motion that we adopt the following areas. The mitigated negative declaration, Council Bill R-2013-16, general plan amendment, Council Bill 0-201301 for first reading, second reading for July the 23rd, Council Bill 02013-2, first reading, second reading, July the 23rd, which is amending the zoning map for EVC, then the tentative parcel map number 13-033, based on the findings, and subject to the conditions of approval, and finally, the precise plan of design number 13-034.
Okay, is there any discussion?
In the interest of making sure everyone's clear what we're approving, it's a safe route to take, right, Mr. Legal Counsel?
All of the above are acceptable. So, is there any other discussion? Any pertinent discussion? Okay, is there any opposition? I hear none, that means it's all approved. Congratulations. And the consent calendar is our next item.
I move the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Item seven, appointment of committee members. We have some openings.
Okay, on the item number seven, we have a, since Bob Frost retired from the Budget Committee, we have one vacant position, and we do have one applicant, which is Mr. Kevin Fisher, or Fisher. He's Bob Frost's replacement.
Bob's replacement at the university.
Yes. So, he is, he is proposing to be, to be his replacement on the Budget Committees.
We handle these one at a time, then?
Yes, please. Oh, you want one?
We'll do one at a time.
Yes, one at a time.
So, is there, is there any opinion on this Budget Committee appoint?
I move that we appoint Mr. Fisher.
I'll second.
Seems to be well qualified. Any discussion on that one? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Traffic Advisory Committee?
Yes, we have one position on the Traffic Advisory Committee vacant, so I will request that the City Council declare a vacancy on the Traffic Advisory Committees and direct the City Clerk to advertise for appointment of one person for the four-year terms.
And did you mention reappointing Michael Stewart?
No, that, he's on the, he wants to be reappointed, yes, yes.
So, we can reappoint him today?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
So, is there any motion on that? And then, we will, of course, advertise for another position.
I make a motion.
Lauren, I think, is continuing on this.
No.
Says he declined.
He's declined.
Are you sure?
Says he can't make the, he can't make the time, the six o'clock time.
Oh, okay.
So, I move that we reappoint Mr. Stewart and declare a vacancy for this committee.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We'll go to Trails Development Committee?
Yes, and on the Trail Committees, we have existing 11 members, and the term expires for two positions, which is Victor Miller and Mrs. Weisman, and they would like to be reappointed.
I move that we reappoint Mr. Miller and Mrs. Weisman.
You have a second.
Okay, is there any discussion or opposition? None of either, it's approved. Are there any reports of councilmen? Any reports of officers?
No, sir.
Sorry, good. No, I just like monthly updates on our projects. Stewart and?
Yes, Stewart Street is coming along great. As a matter of fact, tomorrow, we can have a little show and tell with the university administration. Dr. Hard, Kevin Lang would like to come out and look at the site at 2:00, so you're welcome to attend.
What time?
2:00.
Two o'clock.
Yes. The item typically new, Phase One, is right on schedule. We're in the process of selecting the construction management team for Phase Two, which is the north side of the freeway. The interview for consulting is scheduled for June 18, which is next Tuesday. They're planning to award the contract for construction management by July, so that their team will have a chance to review the final plan specification prior to go out to bid and award the contract by March of 2014.
I have a, I guess I'm on here. Can we contact Omni-Trans and ask them if they can finish that station? Well, all of them, but especially the one on Anderson.
It's annoying, there's never anybody working on it.
And the traffic backs up.
You already have jars on it.
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, we just had a meeting with them today, this morning, and I forced them to at least pave, temporarily pave Anderson so that we can open that up for this weekend. And I've been pushing very hard to get the job done, because what happened, he moved him, they stopped working here, and they moved to San Bernardino, and I pretty much forced them to get it done.
And did they agree?
They supposed to give me the plan and schedule, and especially, the bad part is, they have to redo our street pavement, because if you look at it, the pavement, the concrete pavement, the cement is lower. And at first, I want to come back and just grind our street, and I said, no, it's not acceptable, because by doing so, you reduce the cross-section of the pavement. So, now, I had to go back at least half the street or the whole street, and redo the whole section and make it mastic.
Both locations are bad. In fact, it's causing a bunch of problems in front of the VA.
They're either above the street grade or below it, and they didn't even make an attempt to match the grade.
Well, what happened, I found it out, I asked the same, they said because of the bus, they had to have certain slope for that, for that lift to work for the bus.
So, they're okay with redoing the whole?
Yes, yes. It's going to cost them a lot of money, but that's what they proposed.
That was a decision after the director left.
Yeah, well, I might add, I actually attended that meeting, I don't know if you're aware of Dr. Daly for you, last week.
I'm sure he's aware.
I was in a meeting yesterday about all of this.
Oh, okay. Well, I just wanted to clarify that, when I attended the meeting, I actually did complain and ask about the SPX project and whether it was delayed, and one of the things that the board members said, emphasized to me, that they were uncertain as to its status, and you're well aware, they just, I think they just reappointed a new director, so hopefully that will help speed up the process after the old one resigned. But, anyway, it is a concern, and I'm glad that Jarb, you're on top of it. Thank you.
Before we move on, back to the Traffic Advisory Committee, what are the chances of changing the meeting time and moving it back a little bit later?
Do you want to attend?
Yeah, I thought I was actually the representative, but every time I, they always tell me I don't need to show up, so.
Oh, you don't want to go attend.
I don't know who we appointed, but I've been going.
Yes, he is.
I was the appointee, but, right?
This is the one that I like.
But Art, every time I talk to Art Walls, he says I don't need to go, so.
Well, I've been handling it.
That's why.
Have you noticed the changes I've been doing?
Well, I know you do those anyway. I think you have one of those traffic keys, and you just adjust the lights at random times in the middle of the night.
I've got one of those things in my car. It just automatically rains everywhere.
The mayor and I went out and sat in the session for 40 minutes two weeks ago, so.
Yeah. We're activists, we're activists here. That's why we anticipated the citizens' concern about, speed limit signs, had them up for even.
Well, you know, the thing with Lauren Peskow, and he's a friend of mine, but, you know, he works in the Traffic Engineering Department for the city of Fontana, and so he brings a wealth of knowledge and experience, and actually a level head sometimes to those meetings, and so, when it comes to, you know, traffic-related engineering, so, if it was a problem that he couldn't make the meeting, I was wondering if maybe we could look at moving it back or something.
It's a good idea. We'd be happy to talk about this. Yeah, that's, I have a hard time getting there by 6:00 as well, but I do my best. Making it later just makes Jarb hang around longer after closing time, but, you know.
I leave three stop signs away, so it's okay.
Two stop signs, but that's because.
I've got my eyes on another one. Huron is going to be a freeway when I'm done. The last stop sign on Huron, I think we need to flip it. Okay, so, any other comments about that? I think that's a good idea with that. And then, Lauren could keep coming, and we wouldn't have to advertise.
I know you want to stay apart, but I also want to do a good job in the worst cases.
Yeah, yeah. So, maybe 6:00, maybe 6:30 would work. Yeah, okay.
The directorship, we all support that idea, except maybe Professor.
He's conflicted. He's conflicted. Okay.
I'm not conflicted, I can add to it.
The city council, there's plenty of time to talk in the other three agendas we have. So, the city council is adjourned. We'll go to the successor agency. Are there any items to be deleted or added?
No, sir.
Would the public like to make any comments on this subject? Any items not on the agenda? Since there's almost nothing on the agenda, you can talk on anything. Okay, no takers. The demands register is there for your?
I will move it.
I just had a quick question. It says, under the demands register, it's a tax return, RDA participation agreement, and it's the amount of $56,000 from Anexter. Does that money come to us, or does it go to the state?
No, it's going to them.
I, it's a tax return.
That goes to Anexter. Essentially, what they, what they do is have a point of sale in the city of Loma Linda. We collect sales tax for all their sales in the region, and then reimburse a portion of that back to them.
And I said that's allowed under the general obligations?
Yes, it is an approved item on the list.
Okay, thank you.
The sale of fiber optic cable and hardware.
They're one of our largest point of sales in the city.
Yeah, they're using Loma Linda as a point of sale, because we're the, we're the showboat for their technology, yeah.
And then, the office is right here at the Mission Center Drive, that high-rise building. They just have a space office.
No, that's the old guy. Okay. So, there was a motion, was there a second on the demands register?
I'll say it.
Okay. Is there any discussion or opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. This meeting is adjourned. The Housing Authority, are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir, we did have a closed session items.
Okay, yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to report for the public that the Housing Authority was in closed session on items EA and EB, which were both real property matters. There's a report and guidance given to the negotiator for the board. There's no final action report at this time.
Okay, would the public like to make any comments? Nothing, okay. The consent calendar.
Based on our previous history and knowledge of the items, I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay, any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. The Housing Authority is adjourned. And now, a special annual meeting of the Loma Linda Public Financing Authority. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to comment on this special meeting? Seeing nobody, then we have the minutes, and that's it.
I move the minutes.
Okay, any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved, adjourned, thank you.
I just wanted to comment that, interestingly enough, in the minutes we're approving, it was last attended by Mr. Brower. This is interesting, because we only meet once a year, and it happened to be June 12.
Yes. Yep, you've earned your keep.